Hello YouTube, this is PensyFan17. This is episode 1 of my Route Creation Series. In this video, we're gonna start working on my first route, which is going to be the Pennsylvania Railroad Hutchinson Industrial Route, which is really not a route. It's more just like a switch, a short switching line. But, for the sake of whatever, we'll call it a route, so... Let's get started here. This, as you see it, is what I have so far, a piece of track. So I picked out the track. Um, this is track from Jointed Rail. Not sure if it's built in or not, don't really care, I have it. Either it was built in, or I did download some track off of Jointed Rail, so it might have been in with that, but whatever. Doesn't matter, but it is PBR textures. Does have PBR textures, as you can see the ballast is has got the texture to it. And I did find some ballast that matches it. Let's see, where was that? No. Might be this stuff. Let's see, turn the radius down, we'll give it a shot. Yes, but we want the scale to be down. So, quickly, radius is just this, um, these spinning white lines. So if I turn the radius up, it gets bigger. Turn the radius down when I'm applying the textures. When I'm applying a texture, I can't talk, dyslexic. When I'm applying a texture, um, this, the radius will, obviously, affect how big it is of an area it covers. And then the scale affects, um, the size of the texture itself. So I'm gonna undo that little bit I did there, because it's not the right scale. I'm gonna turn the scale all the way down, because this ballast is pretty small. Put it down, and that matches it pretty well. It's not perfect, but it's good enough. I mean, you look from most angles, you can't really tell the difference. And I gotta put it in a little little thicker here. Sometimes when you have a real small radius, it doesn't seem to fill in quite right all the way. So sometimes I turn the radius up a little bigger than I want, so I get a more complete fill of the texture. As you can see, it looks pretty good. It's not until you come all the way out and the rendering, or whatever you wanna call it, completely changes that it doesn't look right, so... Otherwise, it looks good. So, we're gonna go with that track. So I'm gonna go ahead and do this, because I don't wanna put ballast down yet. I just wanna get the basic track layout down at this point. And we're gonna do that, and probably start thinking about some buildings and road placement, and start laying some stuff out in this episode. And then after that, we'll move on to scenery and and other things, so... Let's get started here. Now, fair warning, I'm probably gonna cut certain parts out, because this is probably gonna take a little while, and it'll probably be a little boring for some of you. Um, some of the parts, you know. There's a lot of stuff in Route Creation that's just monotonous, and you don't need to see on a YouTube video, so... Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and delete this short section of track, 'cause I don't know I don't have anything I wanna do with it. That's just, I just had that there, so I knew what track I was using. Um, and to demonstrate that the ballast texture, so let's go ahead and start with this track, um... This is called JRUSTrack#1/132 Narrow Ballast. There is also a wide ballast version, let me see what that looks like, I did not see that at first. I think I'm gonna, yeah, see, the wide ballast version obviously is wider ballast. I'm gonna stick with the narrow ballast version, 'cause this is a switching line. So the ballast is gonna be a little less generous, and the track is gonna be a little lower. Which, as you can see, this stuff with less ballast is lower to the ground. So I'm gonna use the narrow one. There's other tracks here, there's Rust which looks good. I might incorporate some of that. Actually, I think I will incorporate some of that in this route. Same ballast, just rusty track. New. And, this is a different, oh, these are different types. These here. Different color ballasts, okay. So I'm gonna stick with this track for now. Um, some of this actual, like, my we'll get to that. But I will probably use this rusty stuff for some of the stuff we've traveled, so... Let's go ahead and lay out our basic track configuration. So firstly, I should give a little background on this route. This route is gonna be based on a switching layout that I had a couple years ago. It was not a complete layout, it was mainly just track on a 4x8 table. But the track configuration was very interesting, it posed a very interesting switching puzzle. So I'd like to recreate that in Trains. My equipment was not very cuff, not very, um, complete. I was running a lot of inaccurate stuff. The track was not complete, I was missing some switches, uh, my engine only had a couple on one end, it was a steam engine, only had a couple on one end, so whenever I would go the other direction to do switching, I had no way to couple to the cars, just crazy stuff like that. So I'd like to recreate that route in Trains, so I can actually fully appreciate that track layout. It was a very interesting track layout, as you'll see. Um, and it'll pose some very interesting switching puzzles as we as we actually get into operating it, but for now, we're building it, so let's get back to building it. Um, this, this route, or switching layout, I'll keep calling it a route, but it's not really a route, like I said. But, um, this route is based in 1952 roughly. Um, so we'll be seeing you know, equipment from 1952, uh, buildings from 1952, all that stuff, as much as possible, so... Alright, so the basic track configuration is essentially, on my 4x8 table, I had a staging uh, yard in the back, and a track that looped around, came to the front, there were a couple runaround tracks in the front, and then there was a track that ran around this end that was a interchange track with another railroad. I'm not exactly sure what railroad that's gonna be at this point, I'm not exactly sure where this is gonna be located, this is fictional, obviously. Um, and then there was a track that turned in towards the industries, and then there's a switchback essentially that went back, and there was a long track that had many spots for like, 3 or 4 industries, so all in all, they're about um, and are, really, there were only 2 real industries on the, on the, um, layout, but they had, the one industry had 1 loading dock, the other industry had um, 3 loading areas, um, a warehouse, a tank unloading facility, and, um, covered hopper unloading facility. And then there was a team track in the middle there, and then obviously, there was the interchange track. So you essentially had 4 industries with multiple track spots, so it made it interesting. And the fact that most of the spots were all on one track threw in a very complex switching puzzle, so we'll see how that works as we get into the operations, but now that there's a bit of a background on this route, let's go ahead and start with the track. Laying out the tracks. I'm gonna go ahead and lay out the track in the front here, this is gonna be the track where the runaround track is, and on this right end here will be the interchange track, on the left end will be the part that goes to the yard. You know what, I'm gonna go ahead and move more towards the center of this square. Maybe even to the right a little bit. Go ahead and lay just a long piece of track. I'm gonna put some cars down to kinda get an idea of distance. I don't have exact measurements. But, I know how many cars were on certain tracks. So this, this'll be the outside runaround track. You know what, I'm gonna replace this with the rusty track. I could do a bulk replace, but it's one track, I'm not gonna do that. But I will show you how to do bulk replace, I did figure out how to do bulk replace. That's something that is new with TRS 2019, I believe. That is very useful for, uh, route creators, so... I'm gonna use the rusty track, because this, this, um, runaround track doesn't get utilized as much as the main part, so... There we go, looking good. And this is the narrow ballast, did I get the right one? Yes, I did. Good, good. So that's that, um, this track, this outside runaround track held 4 40-foot boxcars, from what I remember. Go ahead and get some 40-foot boxcars here. And I'm gonna stick them on this track, boom, 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 boom. So there's 4 40-foot boxcars. Atlantic coastline. So they would be able to sit on this outside runaround track without interfering with anything else, so, um... Uh, the spline points then for the track itself would be it's going to track, go to Advanced, Add Spline Points. I'm gonna put a spline point right on the end here. Hello, hello? Making a noise. Do I have to hold Shift? No, apparently not. Very strange, okay, I'm already running into some issues here. Spline Point L. Not sure what that is about. Could it potentially be that there are cars on the track? I don't think so, but let's try this. Yes, that's exactly what it is. That's strange. So I'm thinking, instead of using the cars to do measurements, I'm gonna do an actual ruler, so let's go to Tools, Tools, and Rulers. Add a ruler. I'm gonna go from here, and we're gonna take a ruler and we're gonna make this, um... Roughly 175 feet, which for 40-foot boxcars is 160, but of course with the couplers and everything. And just some extra, we wanna do roughly 175, so there we go. Alright, and then we're gonna put another spline point, hmm, beyond that a little bit, so right there, good. Alright, and then we can go ahead and go into Tools and delete the ruler. We don't need that. Alright. And then at this point, we're going to start bending the track in a little bit. I'm gonna add another spline point here, and right there. And we're gonna go ahead and delete the far spline point, so get Delete Spline Point X. Cannot remove an end vertex, okay, so... See if I can... Yeah, okay, that's how we do it, you just take the regular Delete button. And delete uh, the part of the track you don't want. So let's add another spline in here, right there, and we'll delete this right here that we don't need. Alright, so that's gonna be our outside runaround track. Now, there's another runaround track on the inside. There's 3 tracks, there's the main, it's not the main track, but it's the main track coming in. These are gonna, uh, turn into it. So you got this one on the outside, and then the middle one, which is kind of a storage track. So for that storage track, I'm gonna use the rusty track too. I'm going here. And, um, let's, let's get a ruler first, so we know how far apart we want the track. Add a ruler. Um, 15 feet is the general width for yard tracks, it's 17 normally for main lines for the Pennsylvania Railroad. Um, now, I, that's not based on real reliable sources, I, I did an internet search, and you can't trust the internet, but from what I've seen, that's kind of the basic consensus, so we're gonna go with that, so let's get 15 feet. Ooh, it's doing weird things on me. Okay, I must have let go of my mouse. So we're gonna have to go and do Move Ruler, and then kinda redo it, there we go. 15 feet. Nice. Alright. And we'll go down here, and put another ruler in as well, that's 15 feet. A lot of this work can be tedious, but being a small route, this will kind of help with the tediousness of this, because we're not gonna be doing much of a lot of these things, we're gonna be doing a little bit of all these things. So it'll, it'll kinda make it more interesting, 'cause we'll, we'll work, we'll do something, you know, that on most routes would be tedious, but on this route, we'll do it, and it'll be done, and we'll move on. So that's, that'll be the nice part about this route being a small route. Alright, let's go ahead and do this here, get this all the way over, center it, boom. Um, look from it above, it looks good, it doesn't need to be perfect, if you try to get perfect with your track, and believe me, I'm a perfectionist, but if you try to get perfect with your track, you're just gonna drive yourself crazy, 'cause there's just no way to get perfect with your track. Now, there's tricks you can do, and I don't know what they are, but there's ways you can, I think there's ways you can get your track to go straight and stuff like that. But obviously, I can't get that to work, I'm just gonna do this. And what we're gonna be doing here is, is kind of the general yard ladder tricks that I've seen other route creators use. Whoops. Alright, right there, I already made a mistake, so... Undo. Um, when you're, when you're putting splines, uh, endpoints, I should say, in close proximity to each other, you need to hold the Shift key so that they don't snap to each other. Boom. So they didn't snap to each other. We got 2 nice parallel tracks, that's good. So we need a 3rd track. For that track, we're gonna use the regular uh, track here. Just the regular narrow ballast track, since this is the, uh, the main, not the main track, but the main track into this industrial area. So I'm gonna go ahead and take that. Gonna, first of all, actually, I'm gonna go into Tools here and get a ruler. Put another ruler down. 15 feet again. 14.9 is close enough. If you try to get a perfect length on your ruler, you're just gonna drive yourself crazy. Alright. These yellow lines are making it a little hard to line up. That's good, whoops. It's holding my mouse down, and that's not necessary. Oh, see, I didn't, didn't hold the Shift key again. Tsk, tsk. Um, really though, I started that in the wrong place, I put the ruler in the wrong place, so we're gonna go ahead and delete this ruler. Go into Tools, go into Delete Ruler. Get rid of both of these, put in a new ruler on this end, 'cause this is where I wanna start this particular spline. Ooh, I had 15 feet exactly right there, there we go. 14.9, good enough. It's hard to tell exactly where this needs to be, 'cause of these yellow lines, like I said, so I'm gonna put another ruler down. I'm gonna put the short, put another ruler down. These spinning spline points are annoying, and there's a way to turn them off, let me see if I can find that real quick. I've heard that if you turn those off, it really helps your, um... Spline Port Rotation, right there, uncheck it, yeah. If you turn those off, it really helps your frame rates and stuff, and I was experiencing a little bit of lag there, and now, I'm not getting any, so that's good. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and whoops, I did not wanna add, I wanted to move, so I'm gonna undo this. And we're gonna move the track to the ruler. Where's the ruler? What happened to my ruler? Did I not? What happened? That's weird. See, that ruler there showed up again, I don't remember that being there. I guess it was there. Alright, I guess I gotta put another ruler down, sorry about that. Don't know what happened there. You watched it, you probably saw what happened, I probably didn't click on it right, and the ruler disappeared, and you're like, what's hap, what's going on? I was not paying attention, there we go. Now we got a ruler, I think. Yes, we do, alright, so now we can put this track right here where we want it. Boom. Alright. As you see, we got 3 different tracks here, these 2 are rusty, this one's not rusty, 'cause it's getting used more. And there's more creosote on the rails, 'cause there's more traffic on it. Just cool. Kinda neat, just adds a little variety, and and with trains, you want as much variety as possible, I mean, you don't want too much, but you want, you wanna put the variety in there, just to keep it interesting, because you get a lot of routes where it's just like you know, track and trees and grass, and it's like, okay, that's all that's happening here, it doesn't hold your interest. So when you're running a train, you want interesting things to be looking at, and so there's, there's very, um, varying things in the scene. Just, you know, differences, it kinda makes it more aesthetically pleasing, so... At least that's the way I look at it. Alright, so now we need to put um, put the ladders in, and this is not really a yard, it's a runaround, but we still use the same principles of ladders and stuff. So first, I need to put, need to expand this main track, I'm gonna call it the main track, it's not really the main track, we need to expand that out um, both ways. I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Again, trying to keep the track relatively straight. But you don't want your track to be perfect in Trains, because in real life, the track on real roads is not perfect. So you don't want it to be absolutely perfect, but you don't wanna, want it to be noticeably not parallel. So that's pretty good, I'm happy with that. So let's go in here, put some ladders in, we don't want these to be too steep, but this is an industrial area, so they're not gonna be like really wide angle turns. So, let's get our rusty track again, we're gonna use this again. And we're gonna do this trick here, where we put a piece of track in here, run it across. I'm probably gonna end up moving this, but we run it across to about there. I wish there was a way you could lock spline points on, on tracks, while working on tracks, and I haven't found that yet. It's, it's a little annoying to me, I think there should definitely be a way to lock your spline points, and I just haven't found it. I tried pressing various buttons, and it just doesn't seem to work. So we're gonna try this and see if we don't mess this up real bad. See, if you hit the Shift, it doesn't connect to the track, which is not what we want. If you hit Control, I don't think it does anything. No, it doesn't do anything. I'm gonna go ahead and stick this spline point right here, and move it, so I can get the track lined up a little bit better now. I don't know, that's not what I wanna do, really. Um, I'm gonna undo that. I wanna keep this track straight, but when you put these, these other tracks in, it, it causes problems. Which I don't like. I don't know what to do about that. It's a major problem. I think, well, maybe I need to put another spline in here. And that may be the case. Yeah, that is the case. And see, that made it straight. Alright, so that took care of that, now I'm just gonna go ahead and delete these extra pieces. Oh, see, now it made a curve again, that's annoying. That's weird. How do we get it to stop doing that? I think I still wanna delete these, I'm just gonna have to use this to get them to line back up again. Alright. Alright, so now let's add another one in here. Nope, that's not where I wanted to go. Hmm, that's interesting. It's like not recognizing that this track is here, that's weird. See, now it now it's recognizing it. But when I go over here, it jumps over to that spline point. So maybe if I delete the spline point, I wonder if it's gonna make the track a wonky, yes it does. I don't wanna do that either. I'm getting closer here and see if I can figure this out. I want the track to be roughly, there, so now it works, and I think it's because I'm inside this circle here, so I gotta stay outside the circle. And I should make those circles smaller, they're, they're too big. We want that to be about like that. And we're gonna put another spline point in the center here. And we're gonna move it to try and get straighter track alignments here. And that looks pretty good, and I'll have to mess with it later on. Probably do that off-camera, trying to get it perfect, and I'm probably doing too much right now, but... There we go. You see, this spline point here got messed up. Uh, my switch is too far in, so I need to fix that, and I think that might have taken care of it, I don't know. I don't think it did. Like I said, I'm gonna have to fool around with this off-camera probably to get this right. Trying to find if there's a way to make these spline points smaller. Maybe... Let's see. Spline point size, it's not in here, I'll, I'll deal with that off-camera. Okay, so, looking at this, we have the general shape together. Okay, so, looking at this, we have the general shape together. Um, this right here does not look right. I'll mess with that more off-camera. I'm not exactly sure what's going on here. Yeah, we got something really goofy going on here. Too many spline points. I'll deal with that off-camera, but you see the general shape of this is coming together. We want another spline point right here. To try to straighten this up, because it's... That looks pretty good. It's not, I don't know, I'm not totally happy with it, but I don't really have many options. Add a spline point in here. And move that, and I think that'll help straighten things out a little bit. There, that looks a little better. Alright, let's go over here and do it over here then. Gonna add the same track. No, I did not wanna do that. No, I did not wanna do that. I need to be hitting shift when I do this. Shift cross boom. I'm gonna have to move this, because this is not where I want it. Shift move, shift, move. The ladder's not wide enough. And I wanna make sure it's, yeah, it's pretty consistent with the other one. It's not gonna have to be perfect. Alright, now let's go ahead and add our ladder tracks in. Add a spline here. Try to get it relatively straight. That looks good. And we can delete these now. Probably should've deleted them first. Yeah, because the track angled out again, so let's see here. I think I might wanna move this one. This one here doesn't seem quite right. And then this one needs moved a little bit. There we go. Alright, looks good. Alright, let's add another one in here. Try to do this, well, you know what, I'm gonna put this one in first, because the problems we had with the last one back there was because I did this first, this uh, turnout first, and then I did this one. So let's do this one first and see if we get a better result. Why is it not, like, recognizing it? That's weird. What's going on here? That's weird. Goofy. Let's try it again. Let me try from this side. No, I forgot to hit shift again. Shift there we go. No, I don't want shift. Hmm, it's doing some goofy things here. There we go. Alright, add a spline point in the center here. Trying to get it relatively good. Alright, and then now we can add in our last piece here, and we gotta make sure that the junctions don't overlap. And the junctions are pretty close. Well, you know what, I don't need to, I don't care about that, because this piece is getting deleted. What am I thinking? Alright, there we go. So now I don't have to worry about the junctions overlapping. Now I can add this in. Get centered here. There's that. There's that, add a center spline. First, I wanna delete these other pieces of track that aren't necessary. There's that. Move the center splines, it'll line everything up nice. Nice. Alright, so that all looks good. This over here doesn't, still is not right, so I'm gonna have to delete this particular goofiness. And we got more goofiness here, we wanna delete. And some more here we wanna delete. There we go, we got that all squared away. Now we just have a bunch of the spline points we don't necessarily need. Delete that one in the middle there. Alright, looks good. Now we'll just add onto this like that. Add a spline point in the middle. Move it around to get everything nice. Let's see how that looks. Looks good. I'm gonna move this, because this, I think, is not close enough to the other track. We're gonna do that. That's too close. There, this then needs moved a little bit to make up for that. Looks good. I'm gonna add one spline point in the middle here, just to make it come into the center a little more. Alright, all looks good. Still a little close here, and I think that's the way it should be. No, it's a little close if you look at the ruler. The rulers are not very accurate. So like I said, you can't, and I'm probably being too, um, too picky right now. I'm gonna be like that. If I'm being too picky, let me know in the comments. Probably am. Alright, so we got our run-around tracks done. We got it done. Let's see how it looks up, closer up here. It looks good. Are the switches, are they smooth? They are relatively smooth. That one's not the smoothest when you look at it. It probably could be dealt with, and I might deal with that off-camera. This one over here, I think, is pretty good. This one over here is nice. The other one back there probably needs some work. Alright. So that part's done. Now we need a track, a switch right here. It's gonna switch out to our industries, or switch back to our industries. We're gonna switch back that goes here, and then it's gonna switch back and go to the industries back here. So I'm gonna go ahead and put that in. We're gonna use the rusty track again for that. I'm gonna start it right here. And it's gonna go not sure how far it's gonna go. We'll put it there and we can move it later. Add another spline point right there. Add a spline point right there and right there, because this is gonna be curved. And we'll move it around appropriately. So let's get it like that. That. We're gonna need another spline point here. And we'll move these spline points here and here. And we gotta add another spline point. You're gonna be adding a lot of spline points in order to get your track the way you want it. Because as many points of control you have, the more control you're gonna have of the shape of your track. So, like you see, I'm just kinda adding a lot of extra spline points here, and I can use them as points of control to get my track the way I want it. And that's pretty good. And that's a little tight there. I'm gonna move that. Probably add a little bit more track onto the end here. Alright, and then right here, we're gonna have a switchback. That goes along here. I'm gonna start it over here, because I know where it starts here. Starts right about there. And it's gonna go in a little bit. Then I'm gonna connect it up right about here. And we're gonna add another spline point. And another spline point. Loo-hoo. I think when they overlap, that doesn't allow you to put them in, so there we go. And we're just gonna move this around to get it to straighten out. That's straight. That's straight. Nice thing is, these spline points aren't locked to a particular location on the track. You can move them up and down the track as you move them, which helps with your with your preciseness of your movements. Alright. Now this track, I'm gonna kinda leave be right now. It's gonna go back farther and then turn into this industry. But I don't know what buildings I'm gonna be using at this point, so I'm just gonna leave that be. Um, and this right here needs to be straightened out a little more, because this end here is a straight end where we're gonna put our loading dock for this particular industry. So I'm gonna add more track here, not much more. Add a little more track. And we're gonna try to straighten this stuff out. Get it a little straighter. There we go. Get that to turn a little bit more like that. We should be able to fit, like, roughly a 40-foot boxcar and a flak car in here, so let's see what the distance is with the ruler. Start here. Go down to where it starts to curve. Oh yeah, plenty of room. We only really need roughly 100 feet. It doesn't seem right. We only need about that much space, and we have that much space, so that's good. Let's get rid of that ruler. So this is gonna be, this right here's gonna be an industry with a loading dock. On my layout, it was a tool-and-die manufacturer. I might stick with that for this. If I can find something, it'll work. We'll see what I can find. Building selection and trains is a little limited unless you know where to look. I mean, there is stuff out there, but it's just hard to find it. Alright, so one more thing I wanna do. On this end is add some more regular track. It's gonna come out here and be the interchange track. And then I'm gonna have track here, and we're gonna have a track here that's gonna be for the other railroad, whatever that's gonna be. So I'm gonna start with that, actually. We're gonna put a track in here that's gonna be the railroad. It's just gonna be it's gonna go straight through the route. Ooh, that's weird. My track disappeared. When you zoom out, that's weird. I don't like that. Where's my spline point? Run this roughly. We don't have to be perfect, but we're gonna do that. There we go. And it's gonna curve off on both ends, and we're gonna have, like, a state I might not curve it off. I might just turn it a little bit, so it kinda goes out of view. And we're gonna add, um, another base over here and a base on the other side. Go ahead and do that. Make the track kinda curve off here. Add lots of spline points. This is getting goofy. I think I had too many spline points in. Let me delete some of these spline points. I got too many spline points and it's really messing it up. Just want spline point there. To get that straight, and we want a spline point here to get this figured out. That seems to kinda be the way to go. You want you want, like, three spline points. Like, this one will adjust how this track is. This one will kinda lock everything in place, and then it'll adjust how the track goes from here. That seems to be the way to go. So like, you see, I got it turned off there. So it'll go out of view, and then I'll do the same over here. Probably have it turn off a little quicker. So we're gonna do this. And get rid of this extra track here. Then we're gonna add our customary three spline points, which I have quickly learned is the way to go. And adjust this one to get this track straight. And adjust this one to get this track to curve the way we want it to curve. Nice. Looks good. Alright, now we gotta connect this track into this track. You know what I should do? I should replace this track. I wonder if there's a replace function? You know what, there isn't. And I don't want this, I don't wanna use this track now that I think about it. I wanna use, um, one of these other ones here that has a different color ballast. That one. That'll represent the other railroad. Alright. So already I made a mistake. I should not have and that was wasted time. I wasted my time there. Put down a track that I didn't want. Now I gotta get rid of it and start over. Oh well, that strains. There's probably a way to replace it, but I don't know it, so... Okay, so you know what I did there. So for the sake of your viewing experience, I'm just gonna put this down as a straight line and I'll turn it off cam. There we go. Um, I'm gonna go over here and get this stuff again. And I'm gonna put a track parallel to this track. And then I'm gonna make this track here connect into the parallel track to this one. I think that's gonna be a good way to do it. So let's figure out. I'm gonna make this a 16-foot um, difference of center line for these parallel tracks. Because they're from two different railroads essentially, so I think a little bit more distance is appropriate. Let me erase that, that was a snafu there. You know what? I can move it. I can use the move tool and move my ruler. There we go. That's, no, that's 15 feet. We want 16 feet. There's 16.1, good enough. Alright, let's go down here and do the same down here. That's pretty far up. That's probably further up than I wanted to go, but it doesn't matter. I'm gonna make a big, long, parallel piece here, and then I'm gonna cut out whatever I don't need. So I'm gonna add another ruler. As you can see, that did not go in the center like I wanted it to, so I'm gonna have to move it. That's a little annoying. That's more like it. Okay. Alright, now we can add this track in. And we can just stick it on the both ends of the roller, and that way we don't have to worry about trying to line it up. We just stick it on both ends of the roller, and it's already lined up. Nice. Look at that, it's already nice and parallel. Alright, and then we'll bring this in to that, and I'm probably gonna just make this a nice straight piece to start out. And then we can make the turn come off here, or about there, somewhere. And we'll get it to connect about there. And as you can see, it's already off form. So we'll add more spline points. We'll add one there and one there. And then we'll add one here and here, and we'll manipulate these spline points to get the track to look the way we want it. So there's that. There's that. There's that. There's that, and we'll put one more in the center here. And pull this out a little bit to make it look like a good radius. And we'll actually make, we'll actually make this too, come to think of it. We'll add another one here. And as you see, that looks pretty good. That looks pretty good there. This one needs moved in a little bit. There we go. There's a better transition. And same with this one here. You know what? I'm gonna make another spine point right there. And move that one instead. There we go. Good. And everything's still lined up. Nice. Good, good. Alright, so now that I have that, I can delete these extra unnecessary pieces. And with the extra spine points in, stuff's not shifting. That's good. And as you see, I have a nice curve. That's impressive. I'm pretty new at this, so that's impressive. I'm happy with that. I'm already learning how to do this. Do this well. Which as you can see, it's not easy to do this well, but once you figure it out, it can be done. So let's go ahead and add a crossover piece. And again, more spine points. We're gonna put one there. We're gonna put one in the middle. We're gonna put one here. We're gonna put one there. And we're just gonna manipulate them until we have what we want. This needs shifted down. Whoa. And since there's already spine point there, it's gonna really cause problems, so I'm gonna undo. We're gonna delete this spine point until further notice. And we're gonna move this one down until we feel like we have proper transitioning. You know what? I'm gonna undo all this. And just just put the crossover in at a better angle. That's better. We're gonna go pretty far down. There we go. Now we can add more spine points in. We're gonna put one there. We're gonna put one there. We're gonna put one here. We're gonna put one here. We're gonna manipulate them until we get what we want. That looks pretty good there. Let's move this in so we get a better curve. Looks good. That's a little too much. That all looks good. Delete these. Okay. Trying to delete that ruler. The annoying thing is you have to go into the rulers tab and delete your rulers. You have to have the actual ruler deleter tool, which is kind of annoying, but that's the way it is. Alright. And then I'm gonna delete this ruler here too. Alright, that all looks good. That looks really good. You know what though? Now that I come to think of it, I did not do this right either. This should be longer to accommodate enough cars because the cars are gonna, there's gonna be a grade crossing right here somewhere. And so the cars... I'm trying to think. Where's the grade crossing gonna be? Grade crossing's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be right here and then like this. So we need enough room for the switcher to work here, which shouldn't be a problem, but we need enough room for the cars here. So I'm gonna have to expand this down. I'm gonna do that off the camera so that I don't waste your time. So we're gonna work on this end over here right now. So this, what I'm thinking of doing on my layout, it just curved around to the back here. And then there's a staging around the back. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have a curve like this, then curve back. And it's gonna run on another block here into like a more of a city scene. Run through that a little bit to like a small industrial yard back here that connects to a two-track line. And that's gonna be where the trains originate from. So I'm gonna go ahead and make another curve. I'm gonna try to do this quick. And if it takes too long, I'm just gonna do this off camera because you've already seen me do it once. So we're just gonna do... I'm doing, trying to delete something that isn't there. There we go. Put that in there. And make this a nice gradual curve. Add extra spine points. Add more spine points in the center here. And manipulate the spine points to get what we want. I want this to be a little more gradual than it is right now. As you see, this is way off. There we go. Fix that. I'm gonna add another spine point in right here. This is a little wonky here. Alright, that looks pretty good. Nice. And we're gonna delete this. And then this'll turn and go off, off this particular scene, so I'm gonna ignore that for now. Just work on this. Alright, so next phase, just gonna put some ballast down. Alright, so I have the ballast for this track over here, already picked out. See where it is. This might be it. Let's go in here and just check. Turn my radius down a lot. There we go. See, I think this is it. See if this is PBR texture. Yes, it is. That's it. Uh, the scale's too big, so we're gonna undo this. Turn the scale all the way down because this, this ballast does some pretty small pieces of ballast, I guess is what you'd say. Let's see. That looks pretty good. Doesn't match perfectly, but you can never perfectly match the ballast and trains. It's just the way it is. So I'm gonna undo this and try to make kinda make the radius a little bigger. So that way you get a little better coverage. We wanna cover up all the yellow lines, pretty much. It's kinda weird the way the ballast goes down and trains. It's not like it's like almost programmed to snap into certain grids. It's not like um, just like you would paint something in real life. It's not, I don't like it. When you see, you can see there, it's this rectangle and then this rectangle over here. That just doesn't look right. Now, when you put all your other stuff in, all your other scenery in it, it starts to look better, but still, I don't like it. Right here, I'm gonna put the ballast down pretty heavy. Because of course there's multiple tracks and stuff going on. Just putting the ballast down. And this is a little time consuming, so I'm gonna just go this far so you see how I do it. And then I'm gonna stop. And you look, it looks pretty good. I mean... You get in close and you can kinda tell that there's a bit of a difference, but it looks pretty good. And I'm thinking I might lower some of these tracks a little bit. Some of these runaround tracks, I think I'm gonna lower a little bit. For now, I'm gonna leave them where they are. Alright, so over here, let me finish the ballast up to this interchange track. Uh, we have two different color ballasts that are gonna be melding together here. And this is gonna probably end up being a real pain in the neck. We'll see how this goes. I'm gonna turn the radius down all the way just to get the most precise. As you can see, I gotta really move over to get this to fill in. And then it's in the wrong track ballast and it just is annoying. I'm gonna try to replace that with the right ballast, but I don't know if that's gonna work. It's gonna be real annoying, probably. Alright, so I'm gonna go this far in with it. Alright, so that takes care of that. Now I need to find a ballast that is like this. And I think it's this right here. Let's see. Yes, I think that's it. So I'm just see. It looks pretty good. What about this? That's turntable dirt. We don't want that. Any, whoops, I'm going too far. Any others? Don't see any others that would work. Yep, that's about it. So I think those are the ones that are meant for these particular tracks. And as you see, they don't fit perfect, but they're good enough. As you see, I'm just replacing this. I'm gonna put it out pretty far here. And as you see, it's matching pretty well. Since we're using two different types of tracks, it's gonna be a little hard to get it to match. And I might have to fiddle around with it some more later on, but for now, it looks good enough. And once we get past this point, why is there a junction there? There should not be a junction there. That needs to get deleted. I'll have to deal with that off camera. Because I don't know how to do that. I don't know how to delete junctions. There's probably a tool for that. But I don't know what at this point. Let me jump into track. Let me wait. Finish this and then I'll jump into tracks and see if I can find that tool. Alright, let's get this. That ballast color does not match this track perfectly, but I think it's good enough. As you see, I'm doing a lot of this kinda stuff. And that's not necessary. You just need to get the thing over where you want it to fill in. And it'll just fill it in because it's filling in in set grids. So it's not like me doing this is, is making any difference. Which is really annoying, but it's the way it is. And you can still make good quality routes even though this is annoying the way it is, so. There we go. Good enough for what I'm showing you here. If you look from above, it looks good. It seems to match. Everything seems pretty good. You look here, it looks pretty good. Like I said, the ballast doesn't match perfectly, but it's good enough. And we'll, we'll probably like lower some of the track and do stuff like that and it won't be so out of style. Okay. Alright, so that's ballast. And I showed you how I did that. I will finish the ballast off camera. I will try to find some buildings that'll fit in this route off camera. Do a few other things off camera and I'll come back and show you what I did and where we'll be going in the next episode. And then I will wrap this episode up. Alright, I'm back. As you can see, I got a bunch of random buildings here. It's not that many buildings out there really to use. And there's more that I have to download. But really not that many to work with. But enough, I think, that we can get this route built. But when you start working on the next route, I'm gonna have to definitely find some more buildings. And, and when you have a shortage of buildings, there's tricks you can do to kinda make more buildings out of less buildings. Like if you see this one I've already done over here. I mean, this is like three, three different buildings, four different buildings I put together to make one building, if you look at it. And that's what you have to do when you're in trains. You have to put buildings together to kinda make things fit and make things unique. So you can see, this is the tool and die factory or warehouse or whatever. Not sure if it was a factory or a warehouse. Not sure what the difference is. Not sure if I care at this point. But this is gonna be a business receiving and shipping things that pertain to manufacturing tools and dies. So receiving various metal parts, shipping tools, shipping dies. And I'll get all that figured out a little more in depth a little later on, but you can see what I did here. Um, this is a building here that I matched up against this building here to kinda I don't know. I'm not even sure really why I did that. It's not really necessary. I kinda put this building here at first and I wanted to make it bigger. So then I added this one. And then I wanted to make that bigger. So I put these on here. And this back here, there was a storefront on this building right here. So I put this building here there to block that. And then this building, small building here is just to make a connector between these two. So that's kinda what you have to do. And oh, and these here. This is actually three different buildings, as you can see, put together. And you don't notice. I mean, you don't really know unless you're looking for it, so. You don't know that it's multiple buildings. So that one's done, for the most part. I do have to fix the loading dock. The loading dock's not quite right. I think, I think I need to make some more space. So I think I'm probably gonna move the track out a little bit to make more space instead of having to move all the buildings. I could probably group the buildings somehow, I'm thinking. Like, I don't know. That's probably not possible. Wish that was, but probably not possible. Anyway. So I'm not gonna worry about that one right now. I'll deal with that one later off camera. But right now, what I wanna do is extend this track here. And I wanna wrap this video up pretty quick. But before I wrap it up, I wanna extend this track out and, and work on this industry here, which is gonna be the chemical industry. So first, we need to get all these buildings out of the way. We're gonna use this one here. All these we need to get out of the way. So I'm gonna go in here to the objects, get the move object tool and start moving all these out of the way. And then this guy here is what we're gonna be using, so I'm gonna move him relatively close, nothing that matters. Alright, let's get over the track here so we can do some track work. And this track, I don't want it to be too long. Because all I need is room for a team track, which is gonna be about right here. And that's gonna have about one car spot. Then right about here, I'm gonna have a car spot for chemical loading for tank cars. And right here, spot for two boxcars. And then over here is gonna be a spot for covered opers. So the car, track's gonna probably come out to about here. And I'll have to fool around with that a little bit. And I might do some of that off cam. Well, I don't know. I might do some of that off camera. I'll see. But we want the rusty. And I'm not sure, did we use the rusty for this switchback as we should have? Yes, we did. Good. I was using my brain. Good. Alright, so we'll extend this out. See if the team track's there and the tank loading is gonna be about here. Then I'll extend it out, put a spine point here and curve it in a little bit. Because it's gonna curve in to make room for, for a parking lot right here for this building. So we're gonna add this here. And go straight little ways. And a splat. Whoops. Okay, I need to add, put the spine point there. And then this'll curve in about like that. So now I need to add more spine points to get this curve nice. Put it there. Put one there. And we'll start moving these spine points. That to be about right there. This'll end up about there. I'm gonna add another spine point here to kinda clean this up. There, I'm gonna add another spline point here to kinda clean this up. Alright, and then that looks pretty good. I think it probably could use a little bit of straightening out right here. Yeah. Good. And as you see, this is kinky. I could mess with it by moving spline points around, but I'm just gonna add another spline point. Fix it manually. There's a little kinkiness in the track. It doesn't matter, because this is a switching area. It doesn't have to be perfect. So there's that. This needs to be long enough to fit. I'm gonna look and see how straight this is. It's not very straight. And as you see, it's got a curve on the end, so we're gonna add another spline point right here. Try to straighten this out a little bit. There we go, that's pretty good. And probably move this spline point more in the center here, you get a more straighter curve. There we go, that looks really good. And I'm gonna add on to this here. I don't know, I don't wanna add on. That's not smart. We wanna move this. Then it'll stay straight. We can get it to go as far as we want. Alright, now we need to go into the edit trains tab here and get a couple... Well, you know what? It's more fun to get the trains out and measure with the trains, but I'm just gonna use a ruler, because I don't wanna take the time to try to find the right cars. That's just kinda silly. So... Let's see how, how much space we got now. So we got enough room for... Let's see, this is a hundred feet right here in the middle. That's enough room for eighty feet. That's plenty for the two boxcars. And then we need another for another car for the covered hopper. That's good. We got that, so we're good here. We can delete this ruler. And as you see, actually, I'm gonna leave a ruler here. Because I, as you can see here, it's a little curve, the track. I want this track to be straight, because it's gonna be up against a building. So I'm gonna put a spline point in right there. And we're just gonna get it to straighten out a little bit. Just a little bit. And that's good enough. Alright, now we can delete all this on the ruler here. Delete ruler. Move ruler, delete ruler. There, there we go. Alright, so there's that. So now... Now I think we're gonna need the cars. I should've got this in the first place. Now that I think about it, we're gonna need these cars, because we're gonna need to figure out where the door spots go, so I'm gonna go ahead and search forty-foot boxcar. And there's one. We're gonna plop two down right there. There we go. Two forty-foot boxcars. Those'll mark where the door should go, and then I'm gonna get covered hopper here. Um... See if I can find it here. Need to find some good covered hopper models. I only found these, and they're of a fictional railroad, so they don't really make sense. But they're the only ones I found that are, that fit the area, the era that I'm running really. And look good. I found some other ones, but they're not to scale. It's a little weird how they're not to scale. Maybe they are to scale, they're just a different type of hopper that I'm picking up, but from what I seeing, I think they're out of scale, so... Alright. Let's move these guys around. This guy should be about here somewhere. Good enough, and these guys should be a little more in there. Alright, now let's get our building. And let's move our building into place, and we may have to adjust the length of the track to fit the length of the building. Rotate object, rotate this guy around. Since we have a limited selection of buildings, and this building has an awning this or not an awning, but a roof over the track, we're gonna do that here, although in my original layout, this was just a warehouse with door openings in the side, but gotta do, gotta make do kinda, so we're gonna get this lined up. It's pretty good. We could move a little bit this way, a little much, back off. There we go, perfect. Alright, now we'll move this guy over the track, and then we gotta look in here and make sure it's lining up with everything. We wanna move it so that the doors get right up pretty close. And, and when they do this in real life, I'll use loading ramps to get the equipment to load on the onto the cars themselves, but... Alright, so we gotta make sure this lines up right. So we got two doors here. This is acting quirky for some reason. Not sure why. See if I can do something crazy. This is a bit of a crazy idea. Oh yeah, I can do this. Look at what I can do. Go inside the building and make sure these are lining up. They can even, can I move the cars from inside here? Maybe? No? No? Bummer. Anyway, there's the first door, so it needs to line up relatively well. And there's the second door, and it's in about the same place, so these line up. That's good. Alright, everything seems good. That's crazy. Not much clearance. Is there enough clearance for a locomotive, I'm wondering? Let's see, let's find a locomotive. Hmm. Try to find this real quick. Here's probably the highest biggest locomotive I'd use on this route, and it has to be able to fit under there, and it does it? It might, it might not. Technically doesn't. Hmm. Just barely. So either we just have to ignore that, or we'd have to limit we'd have to limit the, um... clearance for locomotives on this route, or... Or we can lower the track a little bit, and that might get us just barely under enough. And we could get away with it. Which I probably am gonna lower the track anyway. We'll figure that out a little later. Alright, let's get rid of this. So that part's done. We got the, that building where we want it. Now let's go in here, and I'm gonna copy this building, because I'm gonna use this building at least three times for this particular industry. That way, it looks like the same building, but it's just a bigger building. So we're gonna find object. There it is. We're gonna add another one. And we're gonna spin this one around to match this one. Whoops, I wanted to move it. I did not wanna spin. Alright, there we go. Can spin it, make sure it matches. Let's get lower this on your percent. There we go, make sure it matches. It's not quite matching. There we go, I think that's about it. That's about where we want it. Now we just gotta move it into place. I'm gonna try to get these to overlap, so it's not invisible. Which we gotta get in here close. Yeah, that looks pretty good. Good enough. Everything lines up pretty good. You won't notice that, because I'm gonna put another one here, and I'm gonna do this trick here. Or I'm gonna add another one, and I'm gonna spin it around the other direction. We'll see if we can get them to match nicely that way. Let's see if I can pull this trick off, because this is gonna be pretty cool if I can. Oh no, wait, I can't, come to think of it. Ooh, I'm getting lag. Why am I getting lag? Strange. I was thinking I could match these up so that these roof vents matched up, but then the car would be going into this on the other side here, and we'd be going into that right there, and that obviously doesn't look right, so we're gonna have to try to do something else here. Let's see what we can do. First, we need to get this lined up correctly. Oh my goodness, I think it already is. That's crazy. Oh no, I hit the wrong button. Alright, well, if it was, it's not now. Unless I can undo. Can I do? Undo, undo. Yes, I can. Cool. Still learning how to use all these tools. Yeah, it's perfectly lined up. So let's get in here and see what we can do. Try to line this up perfectly. Alright, there's that, and let's see how it looks. Obviously, it doesn't look great. We don't want open space like this. That's not right. We want this all closed off, so let's see if we can move this in without making it look too goofy. Like that. That actually doesn't look bad, because, because the, um... These vents are on the ridges, so it kinda looks like that's supposed to be that way. I think that looks good enough, and you gotta, no one's gonna care really when they're running the route. They're not looking at the rooftops of the buildings and analyzing them like, oh my goodness, that's, that's not right. No one cares. If they do, they'll understand, because trains is not easy to work with, so I'm gonna try to get these lined up so that they're about centered. Is that about good? Yeah, it's about good. Looks good. And that's the way I want it to look. I want the car to kinda go back in here and disappear, and as he's, ooh, I'm in the building. As you can see back in here, there's an opening. I'm gonna have to close that off too with another building in the back. Alright, so that looks good, and as you can see, I'm getting some, um, what do they call that? I forget what they call that. There's a name for it. Where you got two different two different, um, skins or whatever conflicting with each other, so they're constantly changing which one you're seeing, so the way to fix that is pretty simple. You just take this and you lower your building just a little bit. Just a little bit. And we'll use, we'll use the control button to make it very small. How much would run down? Just one a little bit down. That's enough. That's enough there. Not noticeable really. But it gets rid of that weird flickery stuff. You can see there's a little bit of a lowering there, but no one cares. Like I said, no one gives a care. Alright, that's all good. Alright, in the back here, we got this hole we need to get rid of. Why am I getting so much lag? So the way to get rid of this hole is you can see the track doesn't even go all the way back. So we can just take another smaller building here. Let's find one of these small buildings that'll work. Could use this one here. Let's grab that and try it, see if it'd fit. The brick on the bottom kinda matches the brick here, so that might work really well. Does it have a front to it? Yeah, it does. I'm gonna get the front, the front, obviously. Or we might not. I don't know. We'll see how it looks. We might just want plain brick on that. It's kinda getting, wanted to get the idea that it was kinda like a back entrance or something, but we'll see what we wanna do with it, so let's move it in here. And then we can line it up, spin it around. Get it lined up. And then after we do that, once we get this building figured out, I'm probably gonna call it quits for this episode. So you see here, this building is kinda goofy the way it is. It's got a little bit of a kink to it in the back here, in the side. Just weird. You see that there? There's a turn. I might wanna put that side out. I don't know. Let's get it turned low and try it like this. Okay, this is annoying me. The way this, um... rotation thing works, or doesn't work. It like doesn't work in the conventional way you think it'd work. Alright, so I think I have this about lined up where I want it. Now let's move this, see if it fits. Does it work? Is it about where I want it? Yeah, no. Now it's, as you can see, it's still turned a little bit. It's hard to see, because I'm trying to get exactly over it, and I can't really manage to do that. There we go, that's pretty good. Alright, let's turn just a little bit. That might be it. Not sure, because now I think it's turned the other way. Let's just move it into place here and see how it looks. I don't know, it doesn't, doesn't seem to be working for me. I don't know, it looks okay. I'm gonna try to get it all the way back in, though, so that this kink here is not noticeable. There we go, that looks pretty good, I think. Yeah, it looks pretty good. Looks good. Okay, so you see how we did that? We just made, just essentially made a building out of three of the same building and one other building, and we made it all one building, and it looks pretty good. Like I said, you'd have to really be picky to figure out that that's multiple buildings. If you figure out that that's multiple buildings, I don't care. I really don't care. You gotta work with what you got in trains, so I think it looks good. Alright, so this area here is gonna be like a loading area for this industry. This is a chemical industry. Right here, we're gonna have a loading area for tank cars, and then this right here is gonna be the team track. And this is on a bigger scale than my model railroad. Like my model railroad, literally, this is the team track, this was the tanker loading area, and this right here was like right here. That was kinda the scale, so I'm making it on a bigger scale. It might be a little too big, but I'm not gonna worry about it too much. If I try to get it just to scale, it's gonna drive me crazy. And I, I mentioned this in my channel launcher about trying to follow prototypes and stuff, about how that cramps my creativity. I'm already feeling it here. I feel like I have to follow my, my layout perfectly, or else it's not gonna work, and and to try to do that, it's just gonna really drive me crazy, so I gotta just kinda feel like I can have some creative creative license here with this and not worry about it. Because no one's gonna care. As long as it operates well and operates the way I want it to operate, it should be fine, and it will. It will. So... Alright, so you saw how I did that. You saw how I made that building. You saw I got it all lined up. I'm gonna go ahead and get rid of these cars. I don't know why, just OCD or something. I don't want them there. Bit of a perfectionist. Bear with me. Goodbye. Alright. Alright, so that about wraps it up for this episode, and the next episode, I'm probably gonna be working on ballast and getting some roads in and plopping in a bunch more buildings and kinda mashing it all together and making it look the way I want it to look. We're gonna work on multiple more industries. I wanna mention, I forgot, one more industry that I forgot about on this, on this route. Right here is gonna be a scrapyard, right here. And the way it's gonna work is, um... Right here, whenever the scrapyard needs cars, gondolas, we're just gonna plop a gondola right here for the scrapyard every once in a while. That's not gonna happen very often, but that's the way it works. That's the way it worked in my model railroad. I plumb forgot about that when I started talking at the beginning of this video, so there you go, there's some more. Another industry to keep us busy. Alright. This building right here is gonna stay here. This is like a warehouse. On my model railroad, this is where I did my controls. This is my control center. I actually had a, a building over my controls, which is kinda cool, and the edge of the layout was right here. And then over here, I have another building. There was a building here uh, that kinda served as the backdrop for the staging yard back here. I had multiple buildings along the back here, which actually were more up front here, because this is again on a bigger scale, but... Yeah, so... Alright, and then there'll be a road running in the front here. Probably gonna have to move this, well, maybe not. There's gonna be a road right here, and then this is gonna be like a loading area here. Alright. Enough talking. So we'll do all that in the next episode, but for now, we got a lot done. We got the basic track plan. We got two buildings pretty much where we want them. Actually, four. Two industries in these two buildings here. And we'll have to figure out the rest as we go along, so... With that, I'm gonna end this episode. Thank you for watching. Like and subscribe. Keep your eyes open for the next video. Adios.